All right, it's six o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to Christian County Library Board of Trustees Meeting. If anybody needs tonight's meeting agenda, it can be found on the table outside of that first door right there. We'll start the meeting with the consent agenda. Are there any items that we need to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually?
I don't have anything else, so.
Okay. Great. As there are no objections, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, is there a second? All right, let's see. Trustee Alexander?
Aye.
Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda has been adopted. Moving on to the administrative highlights, our 2023 annual report. Yeah, so you have the printout of the actual report in its official glossy colorful form. So, and kudos again to Communications Department for doing a good job of putting that together in a real quick turnaround. We always try to have it ready for if we go to Library Advocacy Day up in Jefferson City, so that we have something to hand them with a snapshot of community impact, basically. So just some of the highlights of it, basically, traffic is up, circulation is up, active cardholders are up, meeting room use is up, and we just kind of highlight some of the outreach things that we do, some good pictures of how we're fulfilling our mission. So there's that. And then I wanted to just talk a little bit about, you know, this is a snapshot in time, but just talk, look a little bit at our trends over the years with our statistics. So you can go to that next slide, Tori. These are printed out for you as well. But last year in February, I believe, I did a five-year trend, which every year in the past five years has been markedly different for Christian County Library for a variety of reasons. But I think 2022 and 2023 are the most comparable when it comes to actually being apples to apples. But it's still interesting to see over the past, I've updated some of the charts that I did last year with the extra year. So there's a couple that are six years and then a few that are three years, just to give you a kind of post-pandemic look at where things go and post-for full-service branches. So for that first graph of the six-year traffic trends, you can see we kind of peaked in 2019, and that was when we had the first full year of the NIXA branch being open as well as Ozark being open. 2018 was when NIXA opened and Ozark was closed for several months for renovations. So that wasn't a normal year. But there was a lot of promotion, a lot of events, a lot of excitement around things. So we were seeing a lot of foot traffic. So then, of course, 2020 happened, and we were shut down for three months and low traffic there. So then 2021 was when both Clever and Sparta branches opened. Clever had been an existing branch, but in a smaller storefront. So the full-service branch that it is now opened in January of 2021. So that's when we kind of moved to the next chart and see what it looks like on a, as loosely using the word "normal" as possible, a normal three years to kind of see how things have grown. And steady growth, we've, we're almost back to the peak of 2019 traffic, which is interesting. And also, I don't know, I'm real curious to see what this year looks like because we have only so much space. So too much growth is hard to manage just from a space standpoint as well. So it wouldn't surprise me if we kind of level out a little bit, but I think this is a good spot to kind of maintain at least. And then the next two charts are circulation. And I've broken them down. I did this last year, so this is just updated with 2023 numbers by branch. And then I include the digital usage and then interlibrary loan, which isn't, it's not a branch, but it's a significant, like, it's a significant resource that the library provides. So, and we borrow and lend enough from there that it's comparable in numbers to like Clever and Sparta branches. So it's, it's on the chart when it comes to the volume of materials that we are lending to other libraries and borrowing from other libraries. So it's just interesting to me to see when I'm looking at how we're circulating. So again, you can see the dip in 2020, and we haven't gone back to 2019 levels, but we're still trending upwards. But you can see that the digital use is continuing to grow still. Some of this is limited, like, we're only ever going to be able to circulate as many materials as we have, and we only have space for so many physical materials. So we're seeing that kind of level off, whereas our digital materials continue to grow. So. Interlibrary loan, is that Mobius? Yes. Okay. We have, Mobius is included. Okay. We have sort of two different methods for interlibrary loan. Mobius is a specific one with specific libraries we have agreements with. Okay. Yeah. When you were talking about space and only so much collection, I was wondering. Okay. Yeah. Back there. And then the next chart is the digital circulation, and these, these make me happy and also cause me pain because of the expense related to the digital circulation. But it's like, most libraries are seeing this continually increasing. Digital audiobooks are just continuing to explode. It's just a trend nationally. I mean, you know, Audible's popular, podcasts are popular, so just that listening format is a very popular thing. And more and more people don't even have, like, CD players in their cars, so they're listening, you know, via apps to audiobooks and things. So this is, it's good to see. Our physical circulation was basically flat compared to 2022, but because our digital circulation increased so much, that made our total circulation up, I think around three to four percent from last year. And the meeting room bookings, I just did the last three years because it's really hard to compare, again, before 2021 because of branch changes as well as pandemic-related loss of traffic. This is something that is, you know, I'm just watching, especially as we look at future renovations of the NIXA branch and knowing that meeting room use is a huge demand and looking at what options we have for flexible space that could be used, like, partially for meeting room, but then reclaimed for just general library use and looking at creative solutions for that. Sparta and Clever, it's good to see they're continuing to increase usage of their facilities. But I know anecdotally from their branch managers, the size of the rooms is limiting.
Very small, yeah.
Yeah. And we can't do much to expand those rooms unless we expand the facilities, which is way, way, way down in the future. We're still paying off the existing facilities. But there may be some options for creative space there. There are some libraries I've been looking at. There are vendors that create, like, these glass pods that you can just put kind of freestanding in, in a building and just has room for, like, one or two people. So I'm kind of curious, like, what, if those will be, will be popular to other libraries, that may be something we could consider depending upon the kind of use. So in the next year, I really want to dig in a little bit more to our statistics here and see what kind of uses are meeting rooms. Like, is it a lot of just a few people? To where more small rooms would be helpful? Or is it more large groups of people to where one large room or a large room that could be divided by walls and curtains? So it's just something I want to dive into a little bit more to see, to plan for the future.
Can I ask you a question on the meeting rooms?
Yeah.
Do we have a current indicator on this data that designates that was a library program or a library versus a?
These are all public use only. We, we collect separately library programs versus.
Yeah, so the usage of the room for the library's purposes is not necessarily reflective.
Correct.
These are all external.
This is all external.
That's great.
Yep, yep. And that's a consideration when we're, you know, planning for programs and stuff that we make sure we have the space we need for our programs as well as the space the public needs. And that's been something that having the extra space in this has been really helpful for, just like staff meetings and stuff. We haven't had to take up the meeting room, so it's been free for patrons to use. And also, the friends of the library's storage has been able to kind of move out of the meeting room space a little bit. So we've definitely gained some benefit and some value to the public from having that space for those reasons. Okay, any questions on, on those things? I do have, just as I'm doing my monthly reports, you know, I always put some basic statistics in my monthly report. Just want to know from you all if there's something different you would like to see in those statistics, if that's a good snapshot, and you can think about it and let me know. But if there's different things you would like to see on a regular basis, I could definitely do that. I mean, I think this is great. I really like seeing these yearly, year-over-year comparisons. I think it speaks volumes, no pun intended, that we are back up just about to pre-COVID numbers in terms of not just foot traffic, but also circulation. And I think that says a lot that we are reaching the needs of the people, of our patrons. So. And I do, anecdotally, this is, I don't have exact numbers, but just in talking to other library directors, we are a little bit of anomaly, an anomaly in the recovering of those numbers. Most libraries are still trending down in some of their traffic.
And that's with about at the same time of coming out of the pandemic, that we were introducing Clever and Sparta.
Right.
And that not only are they growing, but Ozark and NIXA are growing. NIXA obviously reflecting the growth of the community and, and the population growth here. But how wonderful that not just recovering from the pandemic, but with two extra branches. It's, it is neat to, as I drive by the library in Sparta, almost, you know, at first, not so many cars, and then a few more cars, and now just about anytime of day or night, there's cars. And seeing different groups in the meeting room, seeing different people, people coming in with their kids or adults looking for things. It's, it's been fun to watch more of the community get involved and interact with, with the library and, and to participate.
Anything else on?
I've got a question, Renee, on the annual report.
Yes.
Not to put you on the spot, from your executive director summary with the focus on removing barriers to resources. I don't know if there's something in our 2023 that you're most proud of for the removal of barriers, or if there's something that you're really targeting on, having what we've learned from 2023 to 2024, that you can maybe talk to and be curious what, what your thoughts are on that as our top focus area.
I mean, I think the focus here has really been putting things in place to be able to sustain what we're already doing and make sure that it is thorough and accessible and professional in training staff to know our resources. We are, we have done some work on that and continue to do some work on that. There's still some areas of growth that I'd like to see. Like, we have all of the stuff that we need and access to the stuff, but we want to make sure that all of the staff are trained in providing that consistent service. And not that they aren't, but there's always room to grow, and we have turnover and things. So having systems in place that ensure consistent training and regular training so that they are able to, when a patron comes up and asks for help with something or information about something, that staff know the stuff and know how to communicate the right stuff to the right person at the right time.
Oh, that's great, because I'm sure there's a lot of rural libraries our size that wouldn't say they have all the stuff. So that's the plan to begin to now train.
Not all the stuff, but a lot of it.
I also appreciate that you've been open to suggestions on books to be purchased to balance out some of the interests that are being expressed. I appreciate you listening to the community and addressing different issues. I appreciate that.
Any other questions about the annual report? All right. I'm gonna toss it back to Renee for Library Advocacy Day. I brought my water, because I knew I'd be talking tonight. So just to update, since we discussed this in November or December. December. Meeting, we did participate in Library Advocacy Day on February 6th. Nicholas Holliday, Tori Pegram, and I, along with Diana and Echo from the board, were able to go up to Jefferson City along with, I don't know, 50 or 60 other librarians-ish across the state and some other trustees and other library staff. We had updates from MLA, from the State Library, and from Secretary of State Ashcroft. And then we were able to meet one-on-one with three of our four representatives and senators. We met with Representative Gregg and Representative Hudson, Representative Titus. We had scheduled a meeting, but we were, he was, ended up being unavailable, so we met with his staff. And then we met with Senator Moon as well. So typically, like usual, we keep those meetings kind of brief when they have busy schedules. You know, they were kind of just coming from the floor, going back to the floor in some cases. We don't really talk about specific legislation, just kind of mention what we've accomplished in the last year, some highlights of things that they might, each individual might be particularly interested in, given the annual report. Thank them for the state aid that was passed last year and ask for continued support of that so that it helps us accomplish what we've accomplished, give them some swag. And then we did this year also, we talk about it every year, about making sure they have library cards. But this year, we just made library cards for the ones that didn't have them and took them to them. We made these for you. You can use them. They're active, but sign them and send them back if you want, you know, to use them. So we, we have had one of them actually sign and send it back. So that was a win. Store. Yeah, yes, school store for sure. So they, some of them use the library in different ways, but not always. And like Representative Hudson, he doesn't actually live in Christian County because his, with redistricting, his area is part of Christian County and part of Stone, Stone, is that right?
I think Stone County.
So, but we know, like Senator Moon, his, his staff have used library facilities for meetings and stuff. So even if they're not checking things out, it's okay. So they're making use of it in other ways. So that's, that in a nutshell. Those of you who went, do you have anything you wanted to add about Library Advocacy Day?
It was interesting.
Yeah, it was really attacheal, I think, for sure, to see the process, kind of knowing of MLA, but not realizing they had their own lobbyist and that they're, I think receiving their priorities was helpful to see what they're focusing on and then be able to take that messaging toward the legislators was good.
You guys got a tour of the State Library also, which I've done that a couple times.
Getting to meet the State Librarian.
Yep.
Secretary Ashcroft was there.
Yep. Good. Well, thank you guys for taking the time out of your days to go up there and answer me.
Very much, thank you.
Yeah, for that report. I know, I went last year, and the, a lot of the other libraries were like shocked that we had trustees that were able to come. So I think it speaks volumes, again, for Christian County. I'm gonna keep using that line, I'm right over there. All right. So I'm going to, once again, throw it back to you, Renee, on new business, not really a patron bee discussion. I'm just bringing an idea that it's been a consideration that I've been thinking about, and I think this is the year I want to kind of dig in and see if it's time to make some changes, just in light of our strategic plan and everything. So we currently offer library cards to people who are not residents of Christian County and don't own property by fee. That's in our policy, and it's $20 per household annually. That's been the cost since the inception of that, which was early 2015. So that's been nine years, and it's been at $20. So the, the consideration is whether or not we want to raise that because I don't think that that is reflective of what the average taxpayer in Christian County pays in taxes that go towards the library. So if someone outside of the, the area is using the library for a fee, we would want it to be equitable with those who live here and are paying through their taxes for the services. I believe anecdotally, this is something that's hard to get data out because of patron privacy, but the non-resident patrons tend to use digital materials a lot. Is that something we're seeing growth of and increased cost for? That's even more of a concern, that that is using up resources, that then we don't have the money to fully serve our existing, our residents in the county. So.
Do you have an example of what other counties charge nonresidents?
So it, it varies. We are among the lowest, for sure. Green County charges $80, and they use a formula based upon what the average taxpayer pays. And is that $8 per household or $8? It is per household, yes. So that could be, you know, six people, eight people, if it's a large family. So. No, no. So I do, like, I talk to a lot of people who have, like, people who live in Christian County who paid for Green, and people who live in Green County who paid for Christian. And most of the time when I talk to people like that, they're saying, I want all of the digital stuff I can get. So that's why they're in, $80 a year, even for Green County, is cheaper than a monthly audible subscription for their digital audiobook.
That's, that would be true.
Especially for a family. So knowing that, like, I'm looking at calculating, like, what, it's kind of hard to get a specific number. I mean, I can do math of, here's our total revenue we get through taxes, divide it by the population, and come up with a number that's somewhere around $35 to $40, which would be close to, close to double. But I want to talk to county clerk and assessor maybe, and see if I can get a little bit better handle on.
So this is something we might should put on the agenda for next month to take a vote on?
Yeah, it might not be next month. I want to bring a proposal to you, but I have a couple of things to be thinking, rattling around in your brains while I'm working on it, unless you think it's not the time to work on something like this. One thing is to consider, if we change the, we can change the policy and make it a flat, like, okay, it's now $40, for example, or change it to something like, it will be reflective of the average cost of the taxpayer so that I can update it as we go without changing the policy every time. So sort of building a formula so that it's not, we would put on our website or whatever the cost and just update that typically, like, every two years when things are reassessed or whatever. So that's one thing to consider. Another to consider is whether we would increase it incrementally, since it hasn't been increased in nine years. So it's a lesser impact to those who do pay for it or just in one fell swoop, because we could build in, we're gonna increase it $5 a year for five years until we get to wherever we need to be.
I definitely think it needs to be increased to be fair to the taxpaying members of our, of our county. I definitely think that's been something that needs to be addressed.
So maybe, maybe you take the median home value and figure out what they pay the collector. I just, I just looked at my property tax bill, and I have a pretty average home. I'm paying $42.32 to the county collector in 2023 for the library.
For the library.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that tracks. I'd like, if I had to just pull a number out of the hearing now, I would say $40 bucks.
$40 would probably make sense.
Well, and also, I would be more in favor of the direct bump, because if they're living in another county, they technically have access to their county's library system that they're paying taxes for. So for them to reach out to, to use, take advantage of our facilities, they can choose not to do so.
Right.
They have another alternative within their own county. Every county around here has libraries. So I would think just do it, get over, if it's serious for them, if it makes easier for them, just get over with it and just do it, would be my opinion.
I do, another consideration is that we do get some revenue from this. And we, part of what prompted this is last year, we started doing some cleanup because the way these cards are in the system is complicated, and it's easy for things to not get updated properly. So we're just cleaning some things up and making sure they're accurate in how they're coded. So they're charged appropriately and on time and stuff. And, so we do have revenue from this coming in. I don't have an exact number of what that is, but in looking at the numbers, I would very general estimate, say it's about 300 families that are actively using a non-resident card. So at $20, a pop that $6,000 a year. If we increase that to $40, that, if everybody's continues, then that would double that, which would be $12,000, which is equal to about 15% of what we spend on HOOPLA a year. So that would be nice. But knowing if we increase it, some people won't pay for it, because $40 is, you know, just too much for some people.
Is $3 and some change a month?
Yeah.
For, for the ability? That's less than a cup of coffee.
Yep. And some people will find the value in that in some worlds, and that's okay. So I don't, I don't think the increase of the fee, my guess, would be, we will probably break even, is, would be my guess, if some people will keep paying it and some people will break even. I wasn't using it that much anyways, or, or whatever. So I don't think it will be an increase to our revenue, I think is what I'm trying to get at. But it might, and that might help with the digital.
I mean, I keep thinking back to the conversation we had last year about the increasing cost in HOOPLA. And if there's anything we can do to chip away at that coming out of our bottom line as it stands, then I think that would be a great. I mean, I know that now I think twice before I borrow from HOOPLA. So, do I really want to hear that book? But I think knowing that most of the people that are using this service are doing it for digital reasons justifies the cost change. From, even from a professional standpoint, from my own profession, my career-wise, we're looking at cost increases for things. And people, when we bring it up to them, are saying, of course, you're having to increase the cost because everything's increasing. So I think we probably are sitting here overthinking it a lot more than the people who are actually going to pay for it. Because when I have those organic conversations with people, they're like, yes, it makes sense. So I think, I don't think anyone's gonna balk, especially since it will still be 50% of what Spring Fog Green is. Okay. Because I balked at Spring Fog Greens, and I was like, oh, no, that's not happening.
I think you just.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I will finish my analysis of all of this and then bring you an official proposal. Thank you. That just gives me some guidance on how to go.
You're still up.
Okay. Yes, okay. We'll work it to your meeting. So I started to put some facilities updates in my report and then decided there were too many, but I wanted to just talk through them, especially because with reclassified Heath's position to Director of IT and Facilities, it's, he's really dug in and started working on some stuff. So I feel like he's had some bad luck first of the year with things breaking and things needing attention, but it's also helped him learn some of the needs and long-term ideas for long-term planning. And it's helped me learn as well, as we've kind of worked through some things together. So first, I want to just acknowledge that our Dawn, our current part-time maintenance person, has been great. Like, there is nothing in this that would say someone's not been doing their job. We just, like, a part-time person can't manage four facilities for a district. And that was something I knew when I started in my interview process, actually, the board had asked me then, like, how are you gonna maintain four facilities with a part-time maintenance person? It was like, that doesn't seem real feasible. So now we have additional help with that. So Heath and Donner are figuring out, like, how they work together and how, you know, who's responsible for what and how that works. But it's been great to have him still here so that we can learn where all of the water shut-off valves are for Heath and all of those kinds of things. So first off, and you might have noticed this in the financials, is that we're already spending about $7,000 this year so far on snow and ice treatment of parking lots because of, you know, weather. And we did, that sort of prompted a sit-down with Heath and Mary, our Finance Director, with the company that does that, to just make sure we know what we're paying for and what options we have for if there is a cost savings or, or anything like that. So I think that was a really good meeting, just to touch base and learn about their processes and stuff. They've had a change in management, so it's a different person than I've been working with. So we've learned some of the changes that have come along with. I do think they're doing a good job for us, and I do think we're probably giving the best deal that we can. They're very sensitive to our budget and supportive of, like, the library as a community entity. So I think they're probably giving us the best deal that we could get and being very considerate of that with being minimal but still safe when it comes to removing, treating icy parking lots and. with being minimal but still safe when it comes to removing, treating icy parking lots and such. One of the HVAC units here has had some problems and we knew this when we bought the building that the eighteen HVAC units were original to the building and would likely need attention in the coming years. So one of them is probably going to need to be replaced, so that will probably be about ten thousand dollars. We're still looking at getting a second quote because the first one was like, here's a quick fix for an immediate need, but yeah, you should replace it. So we want to find out if there is an intermediary. Like, we know it's old, so it's probably going to need to be replaced, but like, is there something much less than ten thousand dollars that could keep it running for three years? Or, you know, I don't want to spend a bunch of money to just limp along for a year, but.
If I recall, when we went through the details for months and months and months on purchasing this building, the bandages, the disadvantages, that unit was brought up at the time, that this would be something we would have to face. Thank you for doing more about looking into various ways of remedying it.
We've had, the first quote was from a company that we've used for all of the branches before, but we're getting a second opinion from the company that the bank had used to service everything so they know the history of the unit a little bit better theoretically than maybe different people. But we figured that was, at least will give us the best shot of making sure this is something less expensive to keep it going for a few more years. So. And then the other kind of big thing that he's dealt with is the Ozark roof, and I've mentioned this before. It's had some persistent leaks that have been kind of hard to track down even by some roofing companies. And we've had some back and forth with a couple of roofing companies that some are more thorough than others and some don't have time to come out and look at a small business building. But he got up and kind of assessed, like, what he thought the problem was and has done, spent a day, like, cleaning up some stuff and resealing some things. It's a metal roof. So we're hopeful that that's a fix of the leak, but we'll be monitoring it. So the next big rain, I'll be crossing my fingers to see if anything seeps through. It's one of those that it doesn't leak every time it rains. It has to be the right combination of rain and wind. So, but it's, like, you can see it's along the ridge line, so you can see when it does leak. You're like, okay, yep, that's where it's happening, in the ridge line. But, but like, I think he saved just several thousand dollars just doing that. So as long as the fix holds. And if it doesn't, he has a couple of other things to try. So that was, it was good. And he has personal experience with managing metal roofs, so that was just, you know, not something I knew when I hired him, but he just let me think. So those are kind of the big things. So other things I just wanted to share that we've dealt with in the last six weeks, basically. Two of our vehicles have needed new tires. One was expected just, you know, time. And then the other needs an alignment and has caused the tires to wear badly and in the wrong places. So we're going to have to replace a couple of tires and get an alignment on that vehicle. And he's working on, we've had kind of a schedule of, like, inspecting the vehicles. The Outreach Department uses them most regularly, so they kind of keep an eye out for things. But having Heath in that place has helped with making sure that all of the vehicles are getting regular, regularly checked for things that might need attention before they cost too much money and working with Dawn and the other staff to, to get that done. We're continuing to learn what this building needs since we own it. You know that there's a sprinkler system here in a external, internal. And then the, the room that the bank had used for the servers has its own special fire suppression system. So that requires backflow testing, which is normal. It also requires hydrostatic testing, which I learned what that is. Don't ask me to explain it to you because I don't understand it that well. Every five years. So they're like, they were like, you need this this year. And I'm like, I don't know what that is. Are you sure we need it? So I had to, we had to, like, look up, like, what is this? And oh, yeah, it does need to happen every five years. So just that gives us information we need to kind of plan out the future. So we plan the, the services and the testing that's needed regularly for those. And we also learned that since we have a sprinkler system, there's a fire monitoring system and that has to, we have to pay for a service monthly to monitor that. So somebody will get a phone call, it's the sprinklers, they've got one. Hopefully that doesn't happen. Hopefully there's no fires. But we'll, we'll know if it happens in the middle of the night. And then some of the regular little stuff, we had a sign, the sign at Ozark, the front, the side that faces the parking lot, it blew off in the wind and that just requires a little bit of elbow grease to put back up there and a couple of people, since it's large and unwieldy. We had a shelf fall at Ozark Branch, no one was hurt. It was the James Patterson shelf, which, if you don't know, libraries have a love-hate relationship with James Patterson because there are so many books. So it was sort of poetic that the shelf of James Patterson was the one that fell. Of course, it was James Patterson. So they're working on that. He got a water fountain fixed here. That hasn't worked since the library's been in the building. I don't know why. It was never, it just had, needed a piece replaced on the, something with the electrical outlet. And then some door stripping and clever, leaking a window at Sparta, the drive-off window. So just, you know, all of the little stuff. It's just, a lot has happened in his first month of being the one in charge of those things.
Sounds like home maintenance.
Yeah, 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 it is. It's just for, for four buildings. I joke that now when it rains, I, I used to just worry about one roof, my own. Now I worry about five roofs. So I don't, falling asleep to the rain is not as relaxing as it used to be. One thing that has helped Heath be able to do this is we did, we've had an open part-time IT position for a while and we were able to hire for that in January. And that individual is doing really well and is helping just keep the IT stuff running while Heath warns the facility stuff. So, and he's still doing a lot of IT stuff, but it, it's definitely affected his capacity. So that was fortunate timing. So kind of long-term planning that you all should know about that I'm working with Heath on is, well, number one is Heath has worked with Dawn to develop a ticketing system similar to what we use for our help, for IT help. Staff can just send an email to a ticketing system and report and then pass, we can monitor it and assign it to people. We're using that for facilities issues as well. So any staff can report that, that way. And then both Dawn and Heath can look at it and Heath can assign it to whoever and then track it. So that will also help with kind of tracking how much time we're spending on things, what kind of repetitive issues we have, kind of help alert Heath to big things that are continually, things that are repeatedly cropping up, that sort of stuff. So that helps with long-term planning and tracking and time management. And then he and I are going to do walkthroughs of all the branches with the branch managers in the next month to just touch base on, like, all of their facility needs, things that, you know, are just the little things that they don't want to bother anybody with and, you know, because everybody's busy. And also for Heath to learn all the idiosyncrasies of each building and talk about, like, the long-term needs of that branch and regular maintenance issues that we may not have established. Sparta and clever, we hadn't yet got on a regular maintenance schedule just because of the timing of the opening and a new director and pandemic and all of that. So we want to make sure that we're doing that so that we maintain those new buildings.
Have the issues from building Sparta and clever, I know there have been a few parking issues, a few drainage issues, a few things like that, have those been pretty much ironed out by now? Okay, thank you.
I don't think there's anything remaining, although if there is, we'll, we'll, I'm sure we'll come up in the walkthroughs. Yes, yeah. So, and that'll help us with just planning for the future, like, not just next year's budget, but like, five years down the road, what do we need to be prepared? Are we going to need a new roof in Ozark in three years? Are we going to need, you know, the parking lot striped and resealed and clever, that sort of thing? And then that'll help give Heath the knowledge he needs to do more without me having to give him the information. And that'll kind of ease up some of my time, too. So we know, like, just costs in, like, I would say, three to five years when it comes to facilities. I think the HVAC units here in Nixa are, you know, just going to be a consideration, depending upon how long it takes us to raise funds for renovation. Like, the ideal would be we can just build in the cost for that into a renovation. But we'll probably not be able to wait that long for all of them, but hopefully just some of them. So that's a criteria that we'll need to just keep in mind every year when we're budgeting. The Ozark roof, I want to get a better assessment of, like, does it actually need to be replaced or can we just keep patching it and how, for how long? So that'll take, I think, just getting the right roofer out there to give us an honest.
Is this something that you could get, perhaps if we knew or if someone was thinking of donating money, that they could donate it to a specific area for the library rather than general? Like, they could do a donation stipulating it goes for repairs and renovations?
We could. I, most donors with money don't get super excited about HVAC repair. But, I mean, you never know. Some do. So, but yeah, it could be. Am I right about that?
And anybody who wants to give us money my way.
Wealthy HVAC donor.
Yeah. I mean, you never know when you come across someone.
Put their name on the utility room.
Put your name on the HVAC unit. No one's going to say, we'll put it under the thermostat or something.
Brought to you by.
Your climate control, by and by. Yep. And then parking lots. So I was hoping to, just within our Buildings and Grounds budget this year, that we might be able to do the repairs and reseal and striping of the Nixa parking lot. But it's one of those things that I'll wait till towards the end of the year to see if we still have money with the way it's gone so far this year. My hopes are not high. But it's not in terrible shape, but it's just one of those things that the later, the longer you wait, the more expensive it's going to be to repair. So the sooner it's done, the better. And then I'd like to get on a regular schedule to where we just do reseal and stripe, like, one branch every year, just build it into the budget. So that hasn't been something that was built in before. So if Sparta and clever are in good shape, but I want to keep them in good shape. So resealing and, and striping will be something that is just regular maintenance. If we do regularly, it will be less expensive theoretically. So that's the facilities update.
Thank you.
Do you have any impressions or?
That was pretty thorough. Anyone? No? Okay.
Thank you.
For all of that. Okay. We are now going into the public comment section of the meeting. Ask for the board's updated public comment policy. As a general rule, the board will not respond to public comments at the time they are made. The board may ask clarifying questions, comment, or take action at their discretion. Questions for staff about library operations should be made during normal business hours. I do want to add a couple of things to this. One is if you need to step out, I understand things happen. We get phone calls from family. We need to take them, things like that. The request is that you stay in that intermediate area between the two glass doors, just for safety reasons. I'm sure you all understand with heightened emotions, we all want to make sure that everybody stays safe. So if you do go outside, outside, I can't, we can't tell you, you can't come back in, but just please try to stay in that little intermediate area if you can. Also, at the December meeting, there were a lot of emotions, things got heightened. One of the things I'm going to ask is that you respect the board as much as we respect the fact that we are, want to hear what you have to say. We will not tolerate raising of voices or yelling at us, at the, you guys, at Renee, at anybody. So I will give everybody a chance if that happens. I will give the speaker a chance to calm down. That will not take away from their time. But if it happens a second time, you may be cut off. So all I'm asking is that you just try to control your emotions and respect us the same way that we would respect you. Okay. We have eight speakers tonight. Remember, three minutes per speaker and we'll move from one right into the other. You guys have gotten really good at it, starting with Mary Hernandez to Carl.
I think I have everybody's who has materials, but those have to be given to me at the meeting. Otherwise, they won't be. You can give it to me after you speak, just before you leave tonight. Yep.
Tonight, I would like to address how the Christian County Library is failing to follow its material selection policy. We continue to see how the library is choosing to only foster an atmosphere of free inquiry of liberal ideals with a bias against libertarian and conservative viewpoints. The Christian County Library has now refused to purchase the Heroes of Liberty book, Clarence Thomas: A Justice for All by Larry Elder, three times. I had previously requested this book in October and tried to build a case for why all children would benefit from learning about his life story. This book is, in particular, is breathtaking. Justice Thomas has a true rags-to-riches story that inspires the reader to be honest, God-fearing, and hard-working patriots. Renee previously told me that our library would consider more books about Clarence Thomas should there be a demand. Clearly, by having three different people request the same book multiple times, there is a demand. Our library already has six Heroes of Liberty books. Why not add one more? Could the problem be that Justice Thomas doesn't fit the liberal narrative? Justice Thomas overcame great adversity early in his life to earn a coveted spot on our nation's top court and became a black conservative who is a fierce defender of America's Constitution. Everywhere I turn in the library, I see books that portray people of color like Justice Thomas and me as victims, as people incapable of rising up the ranks through our own merit. It, it's as if our skin color is some sort of handicap. Aside from this being deeply offensive, the narrative our library chooses to support is false. America is the greatest country in the world. It's the land of opportunity, but young readers would never know it, given some of the content in our library. Currently, our shelves are littered with books that stoke the flames of racism and are incredibly divisive and dangerous to our community. This needs to change. If the Christian County Library is going to have three copies of The Anti-Racist Baby, This Book is Gay, and eight copies of Assassination Classroom, and the like, then it's only fair we find some space on the shelf for Clarence Thomas: A Justice for All and other books like it. I last asked this question back in October and have yet to receive an answer. Can someone please give you the real reason as to why Clarence Thomas: A Justice for All is being kept off our shelves? Is it because he's conservative or is it because he's black? Anyone have an answer? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. David Rice.
All right. So the Christian County Library Board and Friends of the Library in Christian County currently have odds with Christian County voters over a proposed bill that require library board members to be elected rather than appointed. The CCL Board has historically been appointed by the county's Executive Director of Library Services. This has allowed the board to operate without much oversight from the community. The CCL Board has increased the library's budget significantly in recent years to just over four million dollars. They have also focused acquisitions on books that promote Marxist, LGBT, and anti-Christian viewpoints while denying the purchase of books with more conservative or Christian perspectives. The CCL Board recently tried to limit public comment at meetings after receiving backlash for some of their decisions. They see themselves as above reproach and do not believe they should be held accountable to the taxpayers who fund the library. Additionally, the CCL Board lobbies against the community in Jefferson City to game the tax system, evidence when they went there to lobby for more taxes for Christian County residents earlier this month. The FOL is a nonprofit organization that we're closely with and supports the library. The former FOL president recently spoke at a CCL Board meeting praising their accomplishments. The FOL resells donated books to raise money for the library and lobbies on behalf of CCL's interests, even when those interests do not align with the community. FOL recently emailed members urging them to oppose the proposed bill requiring elected library board members. FOL falsely claimed the bill would cost the library twenty thousand dollars annually in elections. However, with a four-million-dollar budget, the library could easily absorb the small costs through modest cuts rather than further raising taxes on residents. Additionally, FOL argued the bill would give elected board members power over library staffing, programs, and activities. In reality, the board would still only have authority to hire and fire the Executive Director and shape policies. The email shows FOL is misrepresenting the facts about the legislation. The proposed bill came in response to the CCL Board acting against community standards. As the community elects the members, the board would be accountable. As the community elects the members, the Board would be accountable to local taxpayers. We don't need appointed members with no oversight. CCL Board and FOL do not want to cede any control over the library to the community. They believe the library should operate above the people who fund it through their tax dollars. Any effort to make the library more responsive to residents is portrayed as dangerous censorship that must be stopped. In contrast, supporters of this bill want to bring accountability and transparency. With library funding coming from local taxes, they argue residents should have a direct say in who makes decisions about budgets, policies, and materials offered. This conflict has exposed the arrogance of the insular CCL Board and FOL. They claim to know what is best while ignoring or demonizing any opposing views from citizens. Reasonable oversight is not censorship, but rather an effort to align the library's direction with the community it serves.
Thank you. Hi, Lena. Sorry.
David, I'd like to make a comment on your comment. I know that because of the consent agenda, Renee's report will not be read publicly, but wanted to let the public know since these are, as Tori mentioned, available on the website after. So Renee has helped us add some clarity in her report for the Executive Director because I know there's a lot of confusion around the legislation. I think with Diane and I thinking through legislation and being more involved in that, that there's both House Bill 2498 as well as 2648. And with my limited understanding of our Missouri legislation, I know there's a lot of difference in those bills. They are not the same. They do not have the same intent. So I don't want to cause confusion amongst the community and, you know, false concern if someone is very interested in one of those bills or the other. So for the public's knowledge, that is covered in Renee's report and included here. And I think just from our time at the Capitol and being able to be with those legislators, I am interested in seeing the Board's consideration for some of that additional transparency to the community. I think, for instance, we're recording these sessions to be available on YouTube, but they're not publicly available. So I think that that would be a free solution that the Board should consider to kind of create that citizen transparency, that citizen accountability that I think we're hearing from in these, both of these bills, is election of this group of people and management of this business that's happening here. So that's the request of those two pieces of legislation, is increase citizen transparency. I think whether the bills pass or not, they may or may not be successful in legislation. We know how that is in Jefferson City. I don't envy those jobs. But I think we, as the Board, can have the ability to give some of that citizen transparency. The fact that these rooms continue to be full, I think, is excellent and the citizens that are involved and want to be involved in being considered to run for positions on the Board. And I think I would like to ask the Board for consideration of that additional transparency beyond just these documentation, but to have these videos and this recording publicly available on our website. So I'd love to discuss that as a Board.
Add it to the agenda.
Excellent. Yeah.
Thanks, David. Thank you.
This evening, I'm bringing to you information out of the Camden County Missouri Library who has struggled alongside us in deciding what to do with these age-inappropriate books and content issued in their, or issue in their library. They've had similar issues but have dealt with public outcry much differently in the last couple of months. In December of 2023, a concerned citizen of Camden County brought 20 age-inappropriate books to the Board that were physically located in the children's and young adult sections, many books that we have here as well. A new Executive Director was set to take his role the following month, and the Board chose to pull those books off the shelves for a time of public review and comment. The Board dedicated an entire meeting to public comment. They stated over and over again to the patrons that this is your library. And at the latest meeting, three Board members resigned and were replaced, and the new Executive Director issued a proposal that you will find in your handouts. You'll find 10 pages that the Director issued to the public. In the first eight pages, he outlines Missouri law and dedicates several pages to clearly defined pornography as per Missouri statute. In his public comments, he addressed concerns of losing state funding by not taking the clearly defined directives by the state seriously. So here's his proposal. Starting on page eight, the Director proposes a policy that will assure compliance with Missouri law. It will include tags to challenged items to give parents informed consent and alert them to items they might not want their child to check out. It physically moves challenged items to the adult sections. It labels challenged items with a content warning label. It creates an alert that will pop up for librarians to know if an item should not be checked out to a child. And it uses their online catalog system to prevent a child from checking out challenged material without parental consent. So that's a quick summary, but details and examples of this policy are included in the 10 pages I handed to you. So, right here, are age-inappropriate books that were pulled off of the shelves of this library just before this meeting. They are just as inappropriate as what was found in Camden County available to children. Some of the same books are in our libraries. Do you have the same respect for us that Camden County has for their patrons? What will you do with this information and these books set in front of you? In 1 Timothy 1, Paul writes, "We know that the law is good when used correctly. For the law was not intended for people who do what is right. It is for people who are lawless and rebellious, who are ungodly and sinful." Renee, nearly three years ago, you assumed the role of Executive Director and said in an interview, "There are not fires burning that I need to put out. I kind of have it made." That might have been true three years ago, but under your leadership, there are fires burning now. And who in their right minds can look at a fire and refuse to pull the fire alarm?
Kevin?
In an article by Denny Burke, a professor of biblical studies in Boys College of Louisville, Kentucky, Professor Burke featured this personal account of a young lady named Chloe Cole. These are the words of Chloe herself. Over the past decade, there's been as high as a 4,000% increase in children being referred to so-called gender clinics across the U.S. I was one of these children. My name is Chloe Cole, and I'm an 18-year-old former transgender child. I was and still am the type of kid that never really fit into social norms. I was a shy tomboy. At 11, I made my first Instagram account. I had unmonitored internet access. It wasn't long until I was exposed to a ton of LGBTQ content online, and I had never seen anything like it. Of this group, I saw that transgender people are among the most celebrated subset, receiving unbelievable amounts of praise and attention online. I was only 12 years old when I told my parents that I was a boy. Like many parents in that situation, they were scared and desperate for answers. At 13 years old, on the advice of so-called medical professionals, I was put on puberty-blocking medication and a month later, given my first testosterone injection. The Gender Clinic also presented my parents with this now classic false statement. Would you rather have a dead daughter or a living son? Scared for my life, my parents were prepared to sign anything that the doctors asked. This is not informed consent. At 15, I went under the knife for a radical double mastectomy, the kind of breast, the kind that breast cancer patients get. It wasn't until I was 16 that I finally realized what had happened to me, and that was all a lie. I had made a huge mistake. I realized that the beauty of motherhood had been stolen from me by medical professionals whom my family entrusted me to. How did we get to the point in this country in which nearly every pediatric institution now considers it best practice to remove the healthy breast tissue of children while administering drugs typically used to castrate high-risk sex offenders? My wife, Juanita, and I have worked with youth for years. I've worked for the state of Missouri as a youth specialist for a short time. I am a parent and grandparent. These transgender children's books are deceitful and destructive, and the information they provide is a direct attack on the fabric of our families. This material is recruitment propaganda and has no place in our community. Why is this material purchased with our tax dollars and placed in both the children and youth sections of this library? Father God, I praise you for who you are. Forgive my nation. We have failed to raise your standard and protect these little ones. We seek your forgiveness, Father, and I ask for mercy. I ask that you restore our nation and heal our land as we seek your face and turn from our wicked ways. I ask this in Jesus' name. Praise you, Father, for what you've done.
Amen.
We can share it for you. Yeah, keep it to me. I'll share it. Very good.
After the November Library Board meeting, a statement was made that has been simmering in my heart and soul for the last three months. One of the speakers had made a gut-wrenching admission when he stood up to deliver his three-minute speech. He first read a portion from one of the pornographic books placed in the library's youth section. Then he made a brief statement, which I know all too well is the real reason that he is so passionate about this cause. He spoke of his childhood abuse and how he didn't want other children to either be abused or become abusers due to exposure to unregulated age-inappropriate pornography. My heart broke for him as he spoke. We have a lot in common, David and I. I heard many speakers speculating over the last few months about why we're here, calling his book banners, book burners, and so on. Well, let me tell you who many of us really are. Some of the most passionate ones among us are silent members of a circle of survivors. Some come nearly every month, both to speak and to quietly support each other because so many of us have been touched and damaged by the ugly spirit of perversion as children. We're super sensitive when we see it, and we recognize it. At the end of the meeting in November, after David's speech, a lady came up to him and denounced him for reading from the book and for speaking about things that apparently made her uncomfortable. My PTSD instantly kicked in. I was transported back to the age of nine years old in 1969. My father had died the year before, and I was not raised to know God or attend church. One night, the family member who was supposed to be caring for me decided to go instead to the local bar after I went to sleep, leaving me alone in an unlocked house. I woke up in the middle of the night in the process of being molested in my bed by an adult male. That man stole my childhood. I was never a little girl after that night. And to thoroughly cement the unforgettable trauma of that horrible night on my nine-year-old psyche, the free-spirited, immoral family member who was supposed to be caring for me informed me that if I ever told anyone about the incident, she would see that I was sent away. That family member was a selfish enabler, and that man was a pervert, a pedophile. Many of these books in the children's and youth section of the library are pervert instruction manuals, which the library is purchasing with taxpayer dollars from authors who are obviously pedophiles themselves. If adults want to write extremely sexually explicit books for other adults, that's their right. Just put them in the adult section, label them, and keep them away from minors. But really, in the case of these sexually charged children's books, ask yourself this. Logically, why else would an adult write books of such pornographic content and target and market them toward children if they were not pedophiles with a perverse fetish? Ultimately, my point is this. On that horrible night long ago, my trauma happened because there was both an evil perpetrator and a compliant enabler. In the Christian County Library in 2024, the work of evil perpetrators lined the children's shelves. But the evil could not do its work without the complicity of four out of six willing enablers. And I need to say no more.
Thank you. Thank you, Donald.
My name is James McDonald. I'm a resident of Ozark and a Christian. I'm here to request that the sexually explicit, gender-bending material be kept in an adult area only and accessible to adults only, or even better yet, not kept at all. In a previous board meeting, excerpts from graphically, sexually-oriented books from the young people's section of our library were read. There was a time when common sense alone would have concluded that these books are not good for children or young people. I appreciate that we are in a time when common sense is uncommon. I confess that I do not understand now anyone of any political or social persuasion could consider this material suitable for children and young people. Apparently, whoever is doing the material selection for Christian County Libraries does think it's acceptable for children and young people. Or perhaps this person thinks an amoral approach is the best with no right and wrong. I understand that this is a moral decision, even when moral sense is to use no morals. It's amazing what kind of circular reason you can get to with that line of thought. My interest is to have, with interest, I have looked through the Christian County Library Policy Manual. There's a short mission statement of nine words, followed by several sections that in various forms extol the right to read, the need to resist any form of censorship or control. This document points to a national organization that says more of the same. Every alarm bell you have should go off when a right is given with no moral compass to guide it. No right and wrong, no good for the community. Oh, yes, there's a statement proclaiming that parents have the ultimate responsibility for what their children read. I happen to agree with that statement, but in the way it is used, an undisguised effort to move all the responsibility to the parents remove any responsibility from the people supplying the material. In the vernacular, anyone in the corporate world would immediately recognize this as a CYA statement. You can supply the material without any responsibility, absolutely no responsibility. It's the parent's responsibility and so on. Heaven forbid that we should ever connect what we put in people's minds with their actions. Resist this completely, and don't look at the victims, or you might develop a conscience. Pornography written for children or about children, even in limited form, could possibly leave a destroyed life behind, as a testimony. Here's a statement made by Christ that applies today. It's given as a warning, a promise, and I think a prophecy. And he said to his disciples, "Temptations to sin sure to come. The woe to the one through whom they come. It would be better for him if a millstone were hung around his neck and he were cast into the sea than that he should cause one of these little ones to sin." Understand, both as society and as individuals, we will be held accountable. There's no legal safe harbor, no right-to-read provision, no blaming on the parents that can be used to shield responsibility. And just to be clear, we're talking about protecting children here, not adults. There is a road back. It starts with fixing what you can, turning to God, the author of life. You'd like to discuss that with anybody who's antarrested. Oh, by the way, I think the policy manual needs fixing. Another issue.
Good evening. As a patron of this library, I feel compelled to share some thoughts for you, for your considerations in conducting your annual review of the Director and the library operations. I've always found Director Brummett responsive to questions, and the library branch is well-kept with a team of helpful staff members. But there are some procedures and policies that are of concern to me. First, patron ideas and concerns that are shared during trustee meetings are rarely acted upon, and requests for change to improve library services don't seem welcome. The influence of outside organizations on our county library system seems excessive and is often used as a reason things are being done here. This circumvents trustee input and patron ideas and steers policy away from local needs. As heard earlier tonight, pornography and sexually overt material is available in our library. And if it's not legal on the streets, it should not be legal on our shelves. Material circulation data is influenced by an automatic renewal policy, which inflates usage and robs the library of income from fines for overdue books. And then lastly, community room usage is promoted, I think, in a misleading way because the roughly 28,000 people listed on the annual report as using community rooms are calculated when one person that uses the meeting room 10 times is counted as 10 different people. So this is not an accurate depiction of library meeting room usage. So I've got detailed notes regarding these points that I'll hand out to you, and I appreciate you listening to me tonight.
My name is Elizabeth J. Busker. I will not be telling you a story of being assaulted or of people who regret decisions later that they made. I will not chastise any one of you to tell you that you are evil. I will not pray for you. I will not pray over you, not here, not now. I'm very confused as to why we have to listen to how you all supposedly are engaged in conspiracy to promote Marxism and liberal thinking, and people complain about that. And yet, I have to hear my Lord's name taken in vain. I have to walk into this building in a different door, through a different door, because I don't want to interrupt a prayer circle. I would never, never interrupt that. I have to hear an entire population of people, a lot of who are my friends, be called evil. I have to hear other humans be dehumanized and then get prayed for. I don't understand why that's happening in a library, a public library that stands for freedom, about the separation of the church, a place where I can come to get away from the politics I supposedly involve myself in on a regular basis, or the church that I go to. This library is This library is supposed to be about freedom to learn and new worlds through new books. You are the backstop to censorship. So let me reassure you of a few things. There is nothing, nothing illegal by definition in this library, period. Uninformed definitions of the word pornography are used to say that it is illegal. It is not illegal. Every single book passes the pornography standard test of Miller. Let me remind you here that there is a community who believes that Renee and Tori and others of you are the experts that we are to go to to help us curate the best community library that we can provide for our children, for their success, for this community's success. And for all of that, I say thank you for the last 30 minutes of tonight. I appreciate you. Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.